I call this meeting of the Prosper Independent School District Order. Let the record show that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting has been duly called, and that notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. Bill, will you open us up in prayer?
Absolutely. Father, we thank you for this day, this time, that we can come together. Lord, we ask just for wisdom at this time as we make decisions that will affect our students and our community. Father, we ask for your continued blessings here now as we're deep into the second semester. Be with the students, Father, as they're studying, with the sports teams, with all the different things that we have going on right now. We ask all these things in Jesus's name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which is ours, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, into the consent agenda, you have the minutes from the prior two meetings. It's all important, but the last special meeting was monumental. Enrollment. Continue to... Fourteen, six, thirty-nine. That's as of February eighth, so rest assured that number didn't go down. These are just pictures of the projects. This is for...
The two elementaries on track for being ready in plenty of time to...
Nothing's behind. Do not enter that into the universe. We're on schedule to start when we're supposed to. It might cause heartache for them, but yes, Stuber is behind Fur in the process. But yes, in answer to your question.
Fur Hayes will be ready.
No, not in plenty of time, but we are ahead of Hugh's schedule. When, we still didn't have phones the day before school started, so... There's a point of reference. You can tell the difference there with Stuber. Hayes is just about done.
Is that the same blue that'll be wrecked?
Essentially. I mean, that will, there's no scenario that won't feed, so that's pretty safe. And you got Rock Hill. Yeah, it's moving along. Two is on schedule for the first home game, which is either the latter part of August or the first week of September, right? They have yet to decide that. An auditorium that's... Ahead of where it needs to be.
On the stadium, you had mentioned at one point having potentially of being able to cross over the railroad track walk from the high school. Is that anything we've been able to do or is even possible to do?
No, there is a pedestrian bridge associated with Frontier. So, at one time, we had talked about a possible exit and crossing of the railroad because you essentially gain a crossing back when you take Frontier over, but at this point, while we could do that, we haven't done anything past waiting to see what the pedestrian piece of that Frontier piece looks like.
There's really not, I don't see any possible scenario of something over. I guess what could be entertained at some point. But I'm not sure what the price tag on that is is going under. Like they had at Light Farms, they have a... Under the railroad track.
Okay.
Crosswalk, if you will, that they put in pedestrian. Yeah, so that would be more likely than the, well, the bridge is going over, just I'm talking about a pedestrian, a separate pedestrian thing.
A way to get, yeah.
If we, if we felt like there was a great need from the high school to go over there.
Is there gonna be fencing around it? Cause I'm like, like are you gonna have kids going to the auditorium, try to walk? I don't, I don't really know what's in there. Is it just high weeds or, like, if it's mow, can you actually walk?
Well, if there's a will, there's a way. I just...
There is fencing along the...
There is, okay.
Entire eastern border.
Okay.
Of the, on the auditorium side or on, on the west side or the east side?
On the east side of the project, it goes all the way down to the corner up in the auditorium, but does it go around? You know, does it go around the auditorium?
No, it goes, the fence goes separates the private property from the public property, which is the soccer fields for this town and the auditorium, stadium, parking lot. There is a fence that separates that.
Yeah, but kids walk from Preston Lakes. I see them going from Frontier Park to the high school. I see them almost every day when I'm out walking, so...
Reportedly, when they finish the overpass, there's supposed to be a walkway that you can walk across the railroad track above the front.
Right, on the bridge they're building, right? Yeah, there's gonna be a pedestrian walk around the bridge. But that's, but that's, they'll start that after the first football season, around December of this year, and then that'll be a two-year project. So...
Okay. That's in our thought.
No one will be able to get there after the first football season.
In the construction, yeah.
I mean, it'll, everybody's gonna be airlifted. I mean, we, we, it just won't, we won't, no one will get there.
You might get there, but you're gonna get out for a while.
No one will get there.
Just sit around for a while, tailgate for a while.
Oh, yeah.
Once you're there, you're not leaving.
We're gonna have some massive tailgates, and you're two and three. That's a good point.
Okay. All right, we need approval for the consent agenda.
What's the motion?
Bill? Janice second. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries?
This is something we do each year, and this allows us to pursue the staff development waiver with T E A to go along with the calendar you're gonna consider right after this. But this is for, as it says, self-explanatory, teacher training. I recommend that you approve.
Questions or comments?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Mary Lou?
I'll second.
Sheila's second. All in favor? Opposed? Thank you.
All right, so... I'll toggle back and forth.
A couple differences, right?
The recommendation, the recommendation, I believe is B. It's you. I don't know, Ms. Ferguson. I think it was, you know, usually it's around fifty-fifty, but I think it was around fifty-five, forty-five in terms of feedback from the community. That's not a slam dunk of anything. You're guaranteed to hack off half the people. One starts a little bit, you look at the start date. B, B starts on the thirteenth, which is a Tuesday. A starts on a Wednesday. We started on a Wednesday this year, correct? Teachers loved it. That's, that's right. It's, uh, they both end the semester at the same time, in school, uh, same time. So the difference, you look at Christmas when they come back, on A, they come back on the seventh. B, they come back on the seventh. I'm not entirely sure where that day differential is. It's somewhere...
It seems like it's a staff development day or something.
Yeah, I'm sure it's...
Yeah, wasn't it October? Same month there was...
Yeah, so you got fourteen, they come back on the fifteenth versus the sixteenth.
And we have no day, so the, we usually have that staff day in September. Now that's in, they bumped it to August. Something meet elementary.
Oh, for the thirtieth?
Yeah, they normally meet.
So that's, that's the last day in August.
Benchmark testing or something. So, yeah, there's no days in September. I mean, after...
After, after Labor Day. It'll be, after Labor Day, it'll be a, it'll be a healthy stretch. As it will after, mid-October. About a six-week stretch. You got the twenty-fifth there, I'm sorry. It's probably a staff day.
But did A have a day in August or September? What was it?
September's the same on both.
Yeah, okay.
Really, I think the only differential is October between the two. So, I mean, I'll, I will sit here and tell you, that's, yeah, I'll let, I'll let Ms. Ferguson, uh, add, you know, correct what I'm about to say. It's such an insign, insignificant difference. I would say, you know, side however you wanna side on that. It's not, it, there's not that big of a difference with it. The committee's going with, uh, B as their recommendation. I guess they, I know the, the only teacher feedback I had was they loved the Wednesday start, like this year. I don't know what the discussion was between the Wednesday versus the Tuesday start.
The, uh, the public vote was B, but actually the district site base committee liked calendar A best because of the Wednesday start.
Oh, okay.
That was the, the difference.
Okay, thanks for that, thanks for that correction. So the committee, the committee's choice was A. And the, the, the survey showed B.
Is it really just that October day? So we start the day and then we add that day in October?
Can you put it to A again? That's interesting.
It was district site base.
Okay, so teachers still start on the, kids come four days.
Yeah.
You just don't have that four-day weekend, I guess, in October.
District site base, Ms. Ferguson, still polls from all the campuses and community and parents. And how many voted for B?
How many what?
Community, how many?
Fifty-five.
About forty-five-ish hundred.
Forty-five hundred?
What did I do?
No, he's doing, he did it.
Oh.
He's doing, that's what we need.
Don't, this, you know, this is...
So...
You know, he didn't like my toggle skills over there, so I mean, it's going straight here.
Hey, A's on the left.
So, yeah, about forty-five hundred. I don't know if it's set up to where I can vote nine of four hundred and forty-seven times or except where I can only vote one time.
So it's the only difference.
Uh, so, that's not to imply that forty-five hundred different people voted.
We had a lot of comments too.
Oh, yeah.
I can see that four-day October thing being a bonus for a lot of people, but... Kinda like fall break, I mean, down the stadium.
Typically, the surveys are done to, to see if whichever committees are assigned to the task are way off the mark and representing the pulse. It's not a, it's not, it's not the vote of who gets what. It's to get additional input for anything that you're putting out there, so...
Approximately how many?
It's so loud.
Gosh.
Approximately, how many community and parents make a... What's the number of community parents on district site base? It's on a rotating basis. Every campus gets a community member and a parent, but then only certain ones on certain years come into the district where we have certain campuses to provide us with a community member or with a business representative and then the parent. So I'm not exactly sure on the rotation of how many.
The number on the committee grows each year with each campus we add. It's the same proportion. That's outlined in, in board policy and state law in terms of what has to make up the district site base committee, so...
Okay, so remind me, in site base, recommended which one?
A.
A.
And the, and the survey world leaned to B.
We don't know how many individual people.
No.
So it could've been five people.
Could've.
I mean, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna bet it was more than that, but yes, theoretically, it could've been a handful of people.
Would teachers like A? Would working parents probably definitely like A?
I mean, I'll, again, I just know the feedback I had received from staff was focusing on start day on Wednesday. I, no one shared anything with me about anything else other than they love starting on a Wednesday. I don't know what either Dr. Bradley or Ms. Ferguson has, have received over the year, over about this year's calendar.
We looked at some academic things that are going on with testing or with homecoming was another consideration too, but they adjusted and that feedback was provided to the committee to make those adjustments. I think that Monday through Wednesday, because this past school year was kind of a anomaly because we had torrential downpours, if you'll remember, and we had to move schedule pickup and meet the teacher to the night right before we started school, and we got a lot of feedback about that, um, and it was not positive. And then we also put our teachers in a situation where they're having to get their own kids ready for school, but that was just because of torrential downpours. It really, that was the only reason that we moved it. So I think that's why they were leaning more to the Wednesday start. As long as we do our due diligence on our end to make sure that there's protected days before we start school, they'll be golden. So whichever you choose to go with is going to be fine. The only differences are on August, October, November. That's it.
That's it.
Do we want five, do we want four-day weekend or do we, which one do we get out and get more heavily?
I mean, to Ms. Ferguson's point, uh, as long as teachers have ample time before the first day of school. Now granted, when we're all opening multiple campuses, every day is like a week. In turn, at the beginning of the year, when, when you're trying to get it all set up for the first day of school, uh, so that's gonna, in our mode of growth and building schools, my opinion is the day in August is more valuable than it, it means more than a day in October. But we're not gonna face that with Hayes Middle School, which is, you know, we're already near completion on Hayes, so we're, we're dealing with our two elementaries. We're gonna open in time, but it's gonna, rain has caused some issue with, uh, Stuber.
The one thing that it will afford us with Stuber and with Fur is that if you go with the Wednesday start date, we'll, we will have meet the teacher for elementary on that Monday, and that gives everyone Tuesday evening to get ready for Wednesday start. If we go with a Tuesday start, then that means we're gonna be bumping meet the teacher back to Friday, so teachers...
Takes them a weekend, takes away a weekend.
So it will give a little bit of an extension for Stuber and Fur who may be a little rushed.
Okay, I'll like A. A? So we get a motion?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion that we adopt the A calendar.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor of A? Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Ferguson? This is information you've gotten off and on for the last couple of few months, but finally got the final part of it. Or the official, not the final, the official stuff that is required to be presented in public.
Correct. This is the Texas Academic Performance Report. The data that we're going to be looking at this evening comes from the twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen school year. Some of the data presented also that we'll get into when we look at graduation and things like that. You'll be looking at cohort groups, which will also look at twenty-sixteen, so it'll take us back a little bit in time. So just kinda keep that in mind as you're looking at the data. So...
I was trying to do it for you. They couldn't get it.
Oh, I was about to say, that's not, I know that's not the first slide.
I was trying to read your body language and push the arrow. I was failing, okay.
Glad to know we're back on track. So the evening will consist of the district profiles, so we'll look at our staff information, student information, and program information in comparison to the state. We'll also look at our specific district performance, where we look at our star performance, attendance rates, dropouts, graduation rates, and college and career-ready graduates. We also will look at a new component that the state has added in, which is military. So our district and ethnic distribution, you can see broken down by specific student group. You can see in comparison from the student to teacher, and as you look across at each of the areas, this is something that we're working on diligently within our strategic planning process that I brought to you several months ago, and looking at who are we hiring and how are we providing that same type of person as the educator in the classroom so that students have that connection to someone who looks like them. So we are working on that, and obviously we're entering into hiring season, so we will definitely be looking at those dynamics and thinking about the different students that we have that make up Prosper ISD. Our state ethnic distribution, so if you look at the student to teacher at the state level, you can see that there are discrepancies there as well as there are in Prosper ISD, and I know that we are all working on that across the state. Specifically Prosper though creates a very special and unique dynamic because of our makeup of our, our area. And so sometimes area, people don't wanna move to the area from, uh, they are maybe seeking more of an urban situation versus a suburban situation. Our teachers and their years of experience, you can see that it's broken down by the district on the left, and then on your right is to the state. You can see that the majority of our teachers fall into the category of the one-to-five-year teacher as well as the eleven-to-twenty-year teacher. This creates a really nice dynamic for us when we're looking at who makes up a, a team of teachers because you want that veteran, but also that, those new fresh ideas coming in. Our principals do an excellent job of making sure that they're hiring a, a good balance of who's brand-new that's walking in, but also bringing in seasoned and veteran people who are coming from other districts who wanna make up and come to Prosper ISD. And you can see the state falls very similar to us, but you can see at the beginning as well as the over twenty years, there's a little bit of difference between us and the state. Our student demographics, so we are at six percent economically disadvantaged on our student front, and the state is at fifty-nine percent, so a pretty large spread. It's pretty difficult to find a district that looks like Prosper ISD. And so when you're looking across the nation even, sometimes it's difficult to find an area with only six percent economically disadvantaged making up their population. Our English language learners is at four percent, three-point-seven, and then at the state level at eighteen-point-eight. Our English learners are a growing population though in Prosper, and we are getting quite the wide variety of languages that are coming into our district, which is enhancing and improving and really expanding the thinking of our own students who are already in Prosper ISD. Students with disciplinary placements, you can see that we were at point-four percent, and this is where some of that twenty-sixteen, twenty-seventeen data starts creeping in, and then at the state level at one-point-three percent. And then our at-risk students, you can see that we are well below the state. At-risk could be students who have been retained at any point in time in their school career, so even if they were retained as a kindergartner, that designation stays with them all the way through twelfth grade. So you might be wondering what makes that up. Also, students that are reading below grade level can also become at-risk. Students who do not acquire English, English proficiency also, they are considered at-risk students, and students in foster care also. Enrollment by program, so our bilingual ESL, you can see how we are in comparison of the state at three-point-six percent. Our career and technical education, we're exceeding that, which is a great one to exceed at twenty-nine percent. Gifted and talented, we're also exceeding the state number with ten-point-two percent. And our special education, obviously below the state average at seven-point-four, but that is a, a growing number that's coming into our district. Keep in mind, if you're looking at data from the current year of twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen, and you look at our special education numbers, they're actually on the rise. And most of the data that you're looking at is from that twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen, but as I've said, twenty-sixteen, twenty-seventeen will come in play, but this number is coming directly out of twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen. One thing that you'll see that's very different with the current year is the federal government got involved with the state of Texas with the corrective action plan because of the under-identification of special education students, and we're seeing quite the rise this year with identification of special education because we're looking at students with dyslexia going through the special education process. So that data will be reported next year to you, and there will be probably a significant increase in the number. District accountability, we are in A district, which we are very proud of, although we do not fall victim of state testing and that being our only designation of the way that our students perform, but we are proud to be one of the districts in the state of Texas to receive a rating of A. We are, of course, accredited, and we meet our requirements for special education. Our armed services vocational aptitude battery test, that is actually a new component that has come into the TAPER report this year, and you'll note that it says not reported. Our students actually do take that test at the high school. Those of you who have high school students, you probably have received an email asking if you'd like your student to take the ASFAB test, and that's what that is. We've made a, a correction within our reporting because it's a matter of a checkbox. We've been doing it for years. It's just a box. We didn't have checked on our state reporting, and so obviously that's why we were not reported, but our students did indeed take the ASFAB test. Campus ratings, so all of our campuses are met standard rating, and then we also receive campus designation distinctions this year at Folsom, Light Farms, and Rogers. We have three di, different designations when we're looking at state testing, and that's approaches, meets, and masters. Masters is really what we're going after for the student in Prosper ISD. We want them to hit the top percentages of what's occurring within that state testing dynamic, but this is for all students in all subject areas, and approaches is the minimum, okay? And if you were looking at it from the state's perspective, approaches means that students are still going to need a high level of remediation even if they're at approaches, okay? So they may not be fully prepared in the state's mind for the next grade level, so that intervention, tutoring, those types of things will be needed. But as you can see, as we are broken down by our comparison to the state and region in Prosper ISD, we are well, well above the state and region. And then I wanted to highlight too the student groups that are represented within Prosper ISD. One thing to caution when you're looking at these numbers is the number of students within each of those groups. We still have a low number of students represented as the information that I gave you previously on the different ethnic makeup of our, our campus, and so that becomes a very much a fight in our district of trying to have enough students test, because obviously percentages drop a lot faster when you have five students versus five-hundred students. One highlight though I want to bring to your attention, and as we go through the following slides. Special education, Dr. Hickey and her team have done a phenomenal job of really reinforcing with their staff, all of the itinerant staff, the importance of making sure that our students in special education are receiving on-grade level material and exposure to the Texas essential knowledge and skills. And she has done a phenomenal job, and you will see that throughout our data on how that is on the rise, but also I'm very proud of our other student groups because they are hovering at the, uh, either exceeding where we were previously or maintaining, which is quite impressive, again, because of the low number of students represented in each of those groups.
Are there modifications for that? Cause it seems like there used to be, but they're not.
No, and that, that's an excellent question. So when we had the TACTS test, that assessment allowed students to have something called a STAR modified test, and a third grade or a fifth grade science test might look very much like a third grade reading level material as far as the academic vocabulary in it, so it was truly modified and truly watered down. The state made a shift several years ago with... The state made a shift several years ago with the STAR test and they only provide a STAR accommodated test, which means that students within special education can receive accommodations on the test. But the test is the same exact test that every other student has taken. It just may mean that they have oral administration. They may be in a small group. They may have access to a calculator, hundreds chart, different things that are decided within the art committee. These are for our reading students. And again, a highlight is special education. You can see that we are on the rise in the area of reading. This test, the data is a little bit different because the passing rate for a reading test on STAR is much higher than that of math. And you may think, well, it's at a seventy percent and it actually is not. It, it varies by test on what the passing rate is. Math, you can see also again, special education is on the rise with growth as well as our student groups maintaining or exceeding where they were in previous years. English one, E O C, uh, is the breakdown for our high school level. This is one of the tests that the students must pass in order to be able to meet graduation requirements. English one and English two, which is the next slide that I will show you. Both of these tests are extremely difficult, especially for our students in the area of special education as well as English language learners. And so, um, but our teachers are doing a phenomenal job with making sure that they're intervening and making sure the proper supports are in place for students to be successful in both the English one and English two end of course exam. Science is given in grades five and eight. And then at high school, it is an end of course exam for biology. And so this is a, a, um, all grade levels five, eight. And actually the students take it in ninth grade biology. And you can see the data and how we are trending in the area of science. It is a very difficult test and the passing rate is much higher actually on a science test than it is on a math or reading test. And so you can see how we're doing and performing. Again, the district far exceeding the state and the region. Social studies is given at only grade eight and then is an end of course exam in grade eleven for U S history. And you can see how we are performing. Again, I want to highlight special education and the growth that has occurred in that area as well as in all areas. And then our meets, so a meets, again approaches was we need intervention. Meets is we need, we're going to need a little bit of inter- intervention, but we're pretty much ready for the grade level, the next one. And so this is just kind of ratchets up and gives us a higher expectation for our students. And glad to say that our students are more than meeting that challenge. But again, really our end goal is that our students are falling at the masters level, which you'll see here for the all subjects in all grades. And, um, extremely proud of the growth that has occurred and the great work that's happened at the campus level to make sure that we're pushing our students to the highest level possible. You can see there Prosper ISD in comparison to the state and the region. We are, um, almost doubling what is occurring at the state and at the region level. And you can see too, across all student groups, how we're growing or maintaining in that area of masters. And to, in order for a student to get masters, just so you have perspective on that, that's only missing two to three questions on the test in its entirety. So it's pretty impressive when a student reaches that masters level. School progress is a new component that's been added into state accountability. So we do not have comparison data, but I did want to share where we are currently. Next year we'll be able to look at our twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen in comparison to twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen. School progress is one of those areas that we look at that allowed many of our district, our campuses to get those designations because they're doing an excellent job of meeting students with where they are and taking them higher. District attendance rate, this is twenty sixteen. So this is one of those times we flash back quite a bit. And so I've given you comparison data from twenty fifteen to twenty sixteen. And you can see that we're doing pretty well. Of course, we want to be sitting at ninety seven percent, which we are there, but we'd like to be a little bit above that for the attendance piece of that. And then here's the breakdown by campus and you can see how we're trending, uh, twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, and then twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen attendance information. And then Wentzong and Hughes obviously knew campuses and did not have comparison data. Annual dropout rate is something that we look at for grade seven through twelve. You may be wondering, um, why do we have any kind of blip on the radar? And so I can give you a little information about that. We had, uh, one student in grade seven, eighth grade actually, uh, one eighth grader from the twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen school year. And what happens with the majority of these students, they just don't show back up to school, literally fall off the radar. They've moved to another state or, um, a couple of the students at the high school decided to go into a homeschool situation, but there was no tracking. Therefore they count as a dropout for us. And then we had students who, um, enrolled three weeks before the school year was up from another state. And then they don't show up the following year. And it probably means that they've moved back to the state that they came from. They certainly didn't show back up at Prosper High School. And so that's how dropouts get created. Um, but there are six kids that came from the high school and then one student at through this, uh, the eighth grader. Four-year longitudinal data, so we're looking at the class of twenty seventeen graduates. So the students entered in as freshmen in the year of twenty thirteen. And this is to track their progress to see how are they performing? As we look at their graduation rate all the way through those four years. And you can see that we are at the ninety eight percent, ninety nine. College, career, and military ready graduates, that is a new component of the state accountability where we're looking at that military piece because the state now wants us to track if students are going into the armed forces, which is excellent. Cause we want to see too, how many of our students are electing for that. Prosper historically has always had graduates who have elected for the armed forces in multiple branches. And so we will be tracking that and reporting back to that information to you. SAT and ACT, this is only participation. So how many of our students participated in an SAT or an ACT? And so you can see that we were at eighty two point six percent for Prosper. And we had a little bit of growth, but of course our number of students who are graduating and participating in that are also going up. So that should help our participation. I will commend Dr. Burdette and his team though, they have been very strategic in implementing and putting things in place so that we are promoting SAT and ACT.
Does that, does that number reflect, uh, on the group that took it their junior year or a specific year? Or how's, how exactly are they?
It actually is going to be that graduation year. So it'll be your senior year that you're looking at the students who took SAT and ACT. And as we jump into the data with the average SAT score, that is grabbed only at one point in time in the year. It doesn't matter if it was their highest score, it could have been their lowest score. But the state grabs that number. So if I didn't perform well on my SAT and say I had a score of a thousand and then I took it in October, but they were taking the number in August. But I, maybe I scored a sixteen hundred and I topped out on the SAT in October. We don't get the sixteen hundred, we get the thousand. So, um, just keep that in mind as you're looking at the data. It's just grabbed at one point in time, but not the best score for the student who took it. They don't go back and look at that information. ACT, so our average ACT score is at a twenty three point four. The top of an ACT is thirty six. Again, they're grabbing a number when a student takes it. And I'll say that a lot of our students typically start taking an ACT or SAT in their junior year. We usually like for them to at least complete Algebra II prior to taking this. But many of our students go ahead and take that and we're perfectly fine with that because we want them to get their feet wet with practice with that exam. And that's why we offer PSAT, PSAT also at our lower grade levels.
Did you go back to SAT real quick?
Yes, sir.
Did the, did the state grab it at a different time? Because it, it went down across the board everywhere. So it's, uh, either something happened different with the test or when they captured it.
So they did change the SAT, um, the way that they were looking at that. In the past, it's been reading, math, and the writing piece coming together. So there was an adaptation to the SAT, which is what caused the dip. No changes on the ACT though. SAT and ACT, um, and so looking at that college readiness and you can see that we were at forty eight percent. We are required to report out on violent and criminal incidents that have occurred on our campuses during the year of twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen. And these are the different criminal incidents that are reported. So I want to draw your attention to number fourteen where we have a two. Um, obviously the state was at two seventy-two and we were at two. Um, spoke with the principal who entered this discipline entry. And it wa- it was, uh, two students who decided to make a replica of a pocket knife using a three D printer. It wasn't a knife, um, it was a three D. Well, well, we had a discussion about that, but I just, I think that just exemplifies Prosper. Our kids, um, it's not an actual knife. We're going to make a knife in a three D printer. Not that we want a knife made, but it's just interesting that they chose technology to recreate, um, a weapon. But nevertheless, and then obviously, um, number thirty-two, we had an athletic incident with, that was in the locker room. High school graduates, so we're looking at students at graduates from twenty sixteen. Now, the information that's pulled in, you've got your total high school graduates at four thirty-six, which is kind of strange, seemed strange to us with what we're graduating now. But in twenty sixteen, four thirty-six, so our four-year public university. So that's going to be your University of Texas, uh, University of North Texas, Texas A and M. And you can see how our students performed and where their GPA landed. Two-year public colleges, at that point in time, Collin County Community College was not a four-year. It was a two-year. And so you can see that many of our students were probably electing for the two-year college. Um, but I am proud to say that our four-year public, if you'll look at our, um, greater than a three point five GPA was in the higher area. Our independent colleges and universities, so those are your TCU, SMU, private schools, Baylor. That is, that information and then not trackable would be students who did not enroll in a university that was within the state. Because it's not going to go outside of the state. It's only within Texas higher education is what we track. And then a hundred and seventy-seven students were not found, which could also be students who went outside of the state of Texas. Or maybe they chose to delay by a semester and that also would not be where we could track that. Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Ferguson. Okay. All right, Mr. Perry.
This, um, reports tonight is as of January thirty-first, which is after five months of, uh, school activities. And you'll see in our investment summary by banks that, um, we increased our, our general fund from a hundred and fourteen million dollars to a hundred and forty-one million, which is a twenty-three percent increase from last year. Very significant. This next slide will show you the inf- investments by, uh, the source or the home. Um, general fund went from a hundred and fourteen to a hundred and forty-one. The debt service as well jumped considerably from thirty-four point nine to forty-five point million. And the bond stayed about the same, which we'll discuss here in a minute. And the construction went down a small amount. The total amount increased twelve point five percent from the previous year. This slide shows the revenue, uh, which means after five months, um, most of the tax collections were due on January thirty-first. So, uh, this shows anything after this month will show that the, the tax collected that was, was, uh, passed due and we will receive some, uh, fees and dues. So, uh, for the year, for the five months, we have collected ninety, ninety-eight point three million in total revenue versus eighty-four, uh, uh, from the previous year, which is a sixteen percent increase. And this shows you where the, um, let me show, make sure. This shows you that the, uh, out of the local source, uh, eighty-three million increase from the prior year of sixty-five, as well as you see the state revenue was, actually was eighteen, uh, million. But they overpaid us that year. So it was, should have been a lot less than fourteen million. This year, we're right on schedule. There's fourteen point four million. Uh, of that, they did increase, uh, they did overpay us by three million this past year to include that. So we're right on schedule. At this time, we should have collected forty percent of our state revenue. We're right on it. Okay? So we're going to collect sixty percent of that over the next eight months.
And you're not, you're not including the rest of ASSTAR in this?
That, uh, no, sir. That's five million and that's not included. We will make a, a budget amendment in, in August to include that as a revenue item.
That'll be the last, they won't replenish that this session?
Yeah. That's history. Um, this shows you the comparison. As you can see, uh, the local revenue, uh, this year is eighty-five point three percent compared to the local revenue. Out of the total was seventy-eight point one percent. Um, we're, as you can imagine, we are definitely above what we expected in our revenue collections as of this, as of January thirty-first. This shows the, uh, current tax collections. This is a new slide that we've seen in the last couple of months. But as you can see, this is the total levy of this year is a hundred and thirty-three million dollars. This year we have collected ninety percent of that taxes up to January thirty-first. And last year was one percent below. So we've collected ninety percent of all the taxes that we're supposed to collect for the year. And that's, that's great. Um, as you can see, the highest month was December. Uh, we collected, um, fifty-five, uh, this year compared to sixty million the year before. But the total is still above, um, almost twenty, over twenty million dollars more collected this year than we did last year. This shows us our ag rowback. Uh, we are increasingly, uh, we are increasing our ag rowback from the prior year. Last year was a very, uh, was one of the slowest years of ag rowback. As you can see, we're almost, uh, through the five months, we've almost collected a million dollars in rowback for this year. Expenses, uh, as you can see that, uh, through the five months of, of a school year, it's really about fifty percent of our payroll expenses for the year because most of our teachers are paid on a ten-month contract. And there's the accruals, but this is a good starting point to compare this year's versus last year. So as you can see, we have collected, um, uh, I'm sorry, we have paid out forty-eight million dollars in, in salaries for the first five months compared to thirty-seven million. And my, what, what my, um, objective is, is see where we're going to end up at the end of the year. Uh, based upon my preliminary projection, we're going to be about four to five million dollars below our budget for our payroll in this coming August. Preliminary projection. So this shows you the total expenses for the year, uh, fifty-four million compared to forty-three million, which is a twenty-five percent increase from the prior year. This, uh, shows you the difference between, between the two years, uh, based upon the objective of the, the cost payroll. We are a little bit above what we were last year from eighty-eight percent to eighty-six percent. Uh, everything else is very, very similar. We have spent, um, fifty-four million compa- of our hundred and twenty-five point nine budget, uh, which represents a forty-three per- point three percent compared to forty-two point nine percent. So we're right on, right on schedule as last year. This shows you the expenses by function. That's what's approved every year during the Au- uh, August board meeting for the year. And this shows you our, our total expenses by percentages compared to the prior year. As you can see, the lo- the largest is always our instructional. And last year we were at forty-six point four. This year is forty-six point one. Um, everything else is real similar. Again, total for this year is forty point, forty-three point three. Again, total for this year is forty point, forty-three point three compared to um, a four percent, eh, point of all four percent higher than last year. Uh, this is our pro, our activity in our food service fund. Our budget is uh, five point three in revenue. We have received two point six. Uh, our expenses is five million. We've expensed two point three. Uh, a, a year ago, uh, we had a cash flow of two hundred and forty-three thousand dollars in food service. This year, we're at two hundred and sixty. So we're still on target for that as well. Debt service, this is our, where we pay our uh, interest and principal during the year. We only pay that in February, so there's no activity you receive. And on the expense side, to this date, we have earned, um, received and collected thirty-five point two million. In interest, in our um, interest and sinking fund. And this is our athletic, which shows a uh, revenue of a hundred and seventy-five already out of a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar uh, budget. And our expenses are eighty-three thousand, real similar to the prior year. This is a, a slide that shows where our, our expenses are with our bond payments. As you can see, the last six months, we have averaged around uh, or almost twenty million dollars a year. I mean, twenty million dollars a month. As you can see in this slide, we have spent a hundred and forty-five million to date out of the two hundred million dollar sale that we received last March. So we've spent seventy-three percent of the total bonds. Uh, gee, I'll go through this real quick just to let you know where, percentage-wise, have we spent on uh, each of these projects. As you can see, uh, as of January thirty-first, there's only sixteen percent balance left to spend for the Hayes Middle School. Rock Hill, we have a balance of seventy-five percent. Prosper Stadium, we have a balance of thirty-nine percent. And Naterium, we only have thirty percent left to spend on that project. The next two are, are the elementary, Fur Elementary. They have spent uh, about thirty-eight percent, a sixty-two percent remaining. As well as uh, Stuber, you were, basically, they look the like percentage-wise. They spent about thirty-nine percent and there's about sixty-two percent left. And that's my report. Any questions? Thank you.
If not, we need a motion to approve the financial and investment reports in the tax report. Dana? Michelle second, all in favor? Any opposed? Thank you.
Uh, update, these are all recommended by Tasby, so I recommend, uh, we had no changes to what Tasby's recommendations were. So I recommend that you approve as Tasby recommends.
Janet, as you read the thing for us? Did anybody have any questions? If I can get a motion to approve the policy updates? Mary Lou? Bill, second, all in favor? Any opposed? Thank you.
We have uh, Mr. Witt here, uh, if you have any questions for him, this is the final part of the sale of the seven hundred and ten million. And uh, uh, asking for authorization to close that out. He touched on last time, the, basically the, where we are and how much we can grab on any given year based on valuations and everything else. I don't know if there's anything you want to add, Mr. Witt?
No, I'm just saying that, uh, well, good evening, it's good to be back, uh, really here just to answer your questions. But uh, we're working with a hundred million uh, per one point two billion of growth. You grew at one point six billion the year before, one point seven billion this year. So the question may be, we've done two hundred million last year, we're doing two hundred million, can't we just continue that? Eventually, we'll catch up to where it's really a hundred million per one point two. This one for two hundred million, we need about two billion dollars worth of growth. You grew at one point seven last year. So you'll get certified, you'll get preliminary values in April, certified values in July. We're selling these bonds in March, closing in April to supplement the construction fund progress that you're making. So we're actually using most of the coming year's growth in taxable value and potentially just a little bit of the following year. To absorb the two hundred point five million. But your certified value will probably come in similar to last year, one point seven billion or higher. So if it gets up to two billion, then that's just exactly what we need for this two hundred point five million. So again, this exhausts the prior election, you're going into a new election, supplements the construction fund budget for the projects that you have uh, on the screen. You also will be authorizing a very small seven point nine million uh, refunding that will provide some savings to the debt service fund. Uh, it will be done separately from the new money. We're working under that timeframe to lock in that interest rate as soon as possible. Supplement the construction fund budget as soon as possible. The refunding by tax law, the new federal tax law that was adopted, uh, we no longer can refund in advance of call dates. We have to refund within ninety days of call dates. So that dictates the timing of refundings that we will complete for this one and then into the future as well. But you're authorizing both of those transactions to occur.
Doug, do you remember how much we're saving on the ref, refunding?
Yeah, the refunding right now is approximately a hundred thousand per year, about seven hundred thousand total is kind of an approximation. And of course, we're several months away from being able to lock that in. Because under federal tax law, that has to be sold in say, mid to late April and closed mid to late May.
Just a reminder, we're not extending, that doesn't extend any term, we're still paying within the normal expected term.
It's taking the exact bonds out at a higher interest rate at four percent, replacing them with lower interest rates. Uh, and it's a, it's a matching uh, payment structure.
That was one thing I want to make sure, we're not, we're not just extending out.
No, this is not a refunding for structured purposes purely for interest cost savings. That's correct.
Any other questions or comments or discussion? We can get approval for uh, them to go ahead and authorize them to, to sell the additional two hundred point five million in bonds? Janet?
James, go.
Bill? Second? All right, uh, all in favor? Any opposed? Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Doug. Actually issued.
That's the final of the two thousand and seven. It served as well. Here we have the uh, uh, author, uh, see the uh, to sell the outdated, uh, or out of, out of warranty items.
We're trying to sell them.
That's what we're getting permission for.
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
All in favor?
Now, to replace that. I wish it were that simple. Yeah, it's not, it certainly isn't. But you can see the, the, the total on that, uh, for the replacement baker, it's focusing on Baker and Light Farms. Which is a total of for a hundred and fifty thousand for, for those uh, pieces of technology. I know, it creeps up on us quickly.
Thanks, Bill. Can you get a second, Janet? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you.
All right, this has been broken into. A number of, um. The rock bottom price on this for Hayes is the two point one three five million. And I certainly hope, Dr. Bradley, we're not seeing another number on Hayes after today.
Once you approve this, you've already approved the furniture and technologies, so this wraps up athletics, fine arts, curriculum, instructional materials, library books.
Custodial.
Custodial, we should round out.
Next thing, we're just cutting a ribbon. That's the only thing we got outstanding at Hayes, is to cut a ribbon over there. So the uh, recommendation is for the two point one three five.
Janet? Michelle, got a second? All in favor? Thank you.
And then we have this. Yeah, we, we've Scotch taped them together. Here we have, uh, it's really, uh. The two fif, is that three fifty to be included on this or am I taking that out? I'm trying to.
From the number you said earlier, it would be taken out and this would be a separate.
Yeah, so we lied. We got another Hayes thing going on here. Th, these are the instructional materials, uh, this is through, uh, uh, the uh, instructional materials allotment, right? So uh, that we get from the state. Sealed textbook funds, now it's IMA. Uh, so this is uh, what we do to get all the, I'm not gonna say textbooks, even though there are some textbooks, but uh, they broaden that definition. Instructional materials allotment.
Do you have any question? Do you have any question?
Well, think of textbooks. I'll, I'll go back in time. I know, so it's everything, it's. Consumables, all that, all that stuff that's, it's a lot, but it comes from the state. If that makes your decision easier. I can simplify the conversation real quick.
All right, Mary Lou made the first, Michelle made the second. Michelle? All in favor? All right, thank you.
All right. Action to go in.
All right, can I get a motion to go into executive session? Okay, you've got Janet and Bill. We'll go into executive session. If there's anything to be voted on, we'll come back in public session. But thank you very much for joining us.